...this evening, either in person or remotely. Are there any council comments? I heard a "ah" down this way. Councilmember Roberts.
You've got to speak up and get the council comments. I want to say that I went to today, the first of three days, of the local Collider Climate Leadership Summit downtown at the Capitol Hilton. And I was, so I've been doing that all day, and I was very impressed with what other jurisdictions are up to in this world, in this country, and some of the strategies for making a meaningful impact on climate change. And I'm looking forward to briefing my colleagues on the council and staff and sharing with them some of the approaches and making some connections with other folks in the Washington area. And it was a good preparation for my participation on the Council of Governments Committee on Environment and Energy. I met two staffers who I'll be working with. I also met somebody from Alexandria who has a climate change charter in place, who helped put a climate change charter in place. I look forward to sharing that. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that, to go there, and just want to say that.
Good. Others? Councilmember Clay?
I have a request from a constituent regarding the city's historic -- let me start over again, sorry. Very foggy. I have a request from a constituent regarding the county council's consideration of an amendment to the historic district planning process, I think which is commonly known as the NAP Amendment, which could significantly affect the designation of historic places. And I understand that the public record is still open on it and that the city hasn't taken a position on it. And so I wanted to see if there was interest on the part of the other colleagues on the council in addressing this issue and getting more information about how it affects our city specifically.
I was assuming there was interest, and staff has been collecting some information, and we were going to put it on an agenda.
Yes, this was something that councilmember Wright has raised with me. Staff is in the process of preparing a draft resolution for the council's consideration. I just got it right earlier this evening, so my intent was to review that tomorrow with Suzanne, and then we'll get something out to you later this week.
Is there a sense of a timeline of when it's going to come up on the agenda?
I think, yeah, I think we're looking, I think the official, the initial comment period, I think, ends this Friday, but I don't think that's the only opportunity to get something on the record. So we'll be reviewing that tomorrow and seeing what would be the most appropriate time to get something in.
Okay. Councilmember Wright?
A couple items. One, I just want to say that I find the flowers out in front of the community center and all the plantings that are particularly in the, I guess would be the public right-of-way between the street and the sidewalk amazing. I think the city gardener has done an impressive job there, and the surroundings and plantings around the community center are looking great and amazing. That was my first thing. So thank you to the city gardener for that. The second was related to the NAP Amendment. Thank you, councilmember Clay, for bringing that up. And it is something I raised a while ago. I am a little concerned because the official deadline is the 22nd, I think, or the 23rd. For comments, I think it would be good for us to pass an amendment in the near future, but maybe we could consider writing a letter or something, and that could be circulated by email to go in in time for the public record, just because I think some of what they're doing is making a pile of yays and a pile of nays associated with it. So maybe we could, we could have that done before the deadline would be good.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, I'd say. I hope that we may actually be able to get something out either tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest. This should give us a little bit of time to circulate it by email and get something in by the close of business on Friday.
Great. And then lastly, I imagine the mayor's going to talk about this also, so I won't talk about it too much. We were, four of us here, councilmember Robinson, the mayor, councilmember Simmons, and myself were at a fundraiser for the Tacoma Voice, but it was at the, I think, the newest restaurant in Tacoma Park, Roscoe's Pizza Place, and it's a wood oven, wood-fired brick oven pizza. And I actually got to eat a slice, thanks to the mayor getting in there and getting a slice. It was very busy and packed, and the pizzas were maybe not coming out as quickly as we'd like, but it was very tasty, and I encourage people to go and enjoy the new restaurant.
Councilmember Barry?
I noticed that the new police cruisers have been deployed, and they're very nice-looking. And I'm glad to see that we have a gas sipping cruiser as opposed to the guzzlers of the past, so that was a welcome addition. I'm sure they go just as fast, and I hope there'll be spare parts for them in the future, given the manufacturer's difficulties. The other thing that caught my eye was the beautiful mural on the side of the library. It's just stunning and so colorful and sparkly that it'll brighten anybody's day going past there, either in the morning or as I do on the afternoon commute. Just very nice to look at it. And I think I got a message last week from the artists behind this who are looking for new places to decorate. And one that comes to mind immediately, although I don't think we own the building, but it might be worth approaching the owners of it, and that would be the good old rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, which has a lot of, you know, unused spaces, brick, kind of boring brick, and it would be nice to -- phone's going over. Can't stop it. I just got it. I don't know how to operate it. And there was a third thing. The third thing was that the mayor and I attended the CDA annual meeting, along with the chief and some other folks from the city, last Friday. And we heard an update on the non-progress of the transit center, which we had hoped would be built by now and be a nice place for folks to gather and wait out of the elements for their buses, but because of the intransigence of the current owner, that's not happened. But I wonder if folks are so mired in their own stated positions now that they're maybe missing some other opportunities that might emerge. And so city manager Matthews, I would suggest to the planning staff that they float and maybe make some inquiries about the BF Saul property. As you recall, a few years ago, the buses were allowed to travel through the lot, and both board and let off passengers there, and then the owners of the site booted them out. And there was, there was some disagreements with the then-county executive, who was also trying very hard to get a transit center in the area, no-go. But now, with the price of an acre up to $8 million, and the transit center, or this SHA promising that they would go back and maybe look at a smaller piece of property, less than the acre that they had seen before, I wonder if it might not be a good time, in the spirit of cooperation among the jurisdictions and the business owners, to see if the BF Saul owners might look again at a proposal to allow the transit center to be built across the street, since we're not making any progress on the other. But it just might be worth mentioning that to see what would happen.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to thank everyone who helped make the war for pool party at the Piney Branch Pool successful yesterday. In particular, I would like to thank the Piney Branch Elementary School PTA and Ron Wiley, the executive director of Adventist Community Services, for their financial support of the party. Also like to thank Smokey D's Barbecue for cooking all the food, and Norman Ridgeway for popping all the popcorn. Of course, my wife Joyce, who is tireless in those kinds of events. Thank you to everyone, it was very successful.
And I'll just mention a couple of things. The fundraiser that councilmember Wright mentioned was trying to support the local community newspaper and making sure that there is community journalism alive and well in Tacoma Park. I know we have a number of options, and I think it's valuable to have any number of press outlets. I know it's a hard time for print journalism in particular, and I don't know where that's all going to end up, but it's very helpful for people to recognize getting multiple sources of information is useful and not only useful, but a basic need. And of course, people can get information on the Internet, but a lot of that comes from the people who are writing for print newspapers and magazines now, and we don't want to lose that valuable skill and resource and look forward to many outlets for journalism in and around the city. I also wanted to mention the draft sector plan, the Montgomery County part of the sector plan for the Tacoma Langley section that was released last week, and there was an evening where, I guess about, I don't know, 50 or 75 people showed up and got information on that, so that continuation of that process and that information will be coming to the council. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to have that at a time and a place that will be a little more convenient for business owners and residents in Ward 6. And I'm anticipating that that may come at a time when we can go over to Ward 6 and do that rather than have that here in the council chambers. And I also wanted to mention the event on Saturday, and thought maybe councilmember Robinson would want to have some comments as well, on the opening of the community gardens at Sliva Overlook Park. And I know that the city and the county, councilmember Irvin initiated this, and councilmember Robinson put in a good deal of time helping to make that happen over in that area of the city. You want to make any comments on that?
I do.
It was quite a wonderful event.
Thank you, mayor. I was so absorbed with the climate leadership summit that a couple of things crossed, or I missed a couple of things. So I'll start with that. Thank you for that reminder. The community garden has opened on Orchard Avenue in my ward near New Hampshire Avenue. And thank you, mayor, for attending. Thank you, councilmember Irvin, out wherever you are out there, and others for coming and making it a successful morning. The garden has, I believe, 35 or so plots, and I've got one, too. I'm sharing it with a friend down the street, half-plot. And I suspect it will be a successful endeavor. This is, there were many people there this morning, plants are in the ground, and the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, particularly the parks part of what we call park and planning, did a fantastic job of getting it started in a very short period of time, and their intention is to support it fully and to support a year-round garden, which is a great, a great thing for us in the, in the city, I believe. So, what is it, shout-out? Is this what we do these days? I'll give a shout-out to park and planning and others who made that a success. I also want to just touch on the voice opening, or the voice fundraiser at Roscoe's. Twenty-two years ago, my daughter was born, and 21 years ago, with two partners, I started the Tacoma Voice, and pretty quickly, after a couple of years, sold it, sold my portion. And had I known then that the voice would continue for so long, I would have, I'm glad to have started it. It's kind of one of these, I'm amazed that it has continued so long, I'm thrilled that it has continued. It was, in a way, was the original blog, because people have been able to speak their minds online, before there wasn't online, in public, and for the community to see and read. And I'm hopeful that there will be a way for the Tacoma Voice to take the next step and be a viable, continuing and viable newspaper. Now, as far as my daughter goes, she started in the first, around the 1st of February on a bicycle with a friend of hers, a man friend, in Guatemala, near Antigua, Guatemala, central Guatemala, and she arrived on Saturday night, having bicycled 3,500 miles from Guatemala. And we were, of course, thrilled to see her arrive. I was going to go out and meet her in Cumberland, but they accelerated their pace, so I was spared that opportunity. I'm not too sad about that, because I was going to ride back with them on bicycle. But they're back, and here's another shout-out to my daughter. When you're 22, you can ride 3,500 miles and still make dinner when you get back, so thank you.
And I just wanted to briefly mention that one of the things that I noted on Saturday morning at the community garden opening celebration, I gave credit to park and planning for, I'll say, finally figuring out where Tacoma Park is in terms of their ability to do park maintenance and to find the farthest point from their maintenance facility, and to commit to getting there, and I hope that that will lead to improved maintenance in a number of park and planning facilities in Tacoma Park. And I did it with a big smile on my face, and they took it in the way that it was intended, and I hope that they will remember us and continue to give us really good service on our park facilities here. I think that takes care of everybody for council comments, so the next item on the agenda is adoption of minutes. Do we have minutes for the 16th and the 20th period? Okay. So we will not have any adoption of minutes this evening. And so I'll go to the public comment period, if anybody would like to speak on any item that is not on our special session agenda this evening. So if you have any item, any comments on any of the items, the first seven items on the agenda, if you can hold until those items, otherwise, please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yep. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. It's good to be back again. Just wanted to thank everybody in Tacoma Park who came down to the Mother's Day celebration on the Mall and in front of the White House. We had a big banner saying, you know, "We shall not, we shall not kill another mother's children, we shall not kill another mother's child." And we had that in front of the White House, and we marked, it was called a cozy for some reason or another, I don't know why. It was 144 feet long, but, and it was great. And I was down there, of course, with the peace symbol. But I would like to, I noticed one thing they had on the Mall. They had a display with children crawling all over them, and mothers bringing their babies down to see it. They had Abrams tanks, they had rocket launchers, they had helicopters, they had all kinds of wall machines down there to celebrate Mother's Day. And I think it'd be great if we could get everybody in Tacoma Park who, you know, everybody who's listening tonight. And also, I'd like to ask city council if they could write a resolution asking President Obama, that's why I'm wearing his shirt, so that he might get the message. You know, that we might ask our government to remove those displays on days like Mother's Day. Because Mother's Day, I always thought was supposed to be to celebrate the miracle of birth, not the, not the horror of death. I wonder how some Iraqi mother feels when she looks on the news and sees those displays, hundreds of, hundreds of wall machines, weapons of killing, not weapons of life. You know, in our, in our nation's capital, right on our Mall, down near the Capitol Building itself. I was wondering, mayor, if you could get the council to write a resolution and a letter to the president, asking him to please not allow that to happen again, to respect our mothers, and to not to have a display like that again. In all my 54 years, I have seen that display time and time again, and I would like to see, I would like to see one thing in my life, to see that display taken down and not allowed, and not allowed to be put back up again. We, granted, we do need a military, but we don't need to be putting on weapons of destruction to celebrate Mother's Day and other days. So I'd like to ask everybody at Tacoma Park to get in touch with their senators and their congressmen, and I'd like to ask the city council, please, can we do that as a city, a city working for peace, to ask the government not to ever put that display up on our malls again? Thank you. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Could we do that?
Why don't you work with councilmember Simmons and make sure that we have the right information?
Yeah, because they do this, they did it on Mother's Day, and that's not a way to bring an infant into the world. The first thing he sees is a tank and a helicopter and a rocket launcher and stuff like that. They do not need to be seeing that. We need to be putting our money toward peace and toward health, like Obama said he was going to do. We need to also be taking those weapons off our malls and off our streets. We should not be proud that we have to have them. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else who has any comments for public comment? Seeing none, next item is the city manager's comments.
Just two quick items this evening. This is, first item's more for the benefit of the public probably than the council, since you're already aware of this, but we are in the process of seeking funding through the U.S. Department of Justice under the BURN Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. This is something that we've gotten funding from some time, but through the stimulus program, there is some additional funding that we are pursuing. We have proposed that the funding, which is approximately $57,000, be used in two areas. One is additional overtime funds for the department to conduct directed patrol and clean clothes details, and the second is to provide some additional hours for our accreditation officer. That's currently a part-time position at 20 hours per week, and this was something that the fiscal limitations of the budget did not provide for. One of the requirements of the grant program is a public comment period of 30 days, so anyone who would like to submit any comments about the proposed use of funds can submit those to Captain Edward Corsi. The other item I had is just to let the council know, as we're getting ready to take final action on the budget, hopefully next week, I am checking with the department heads about any projects that they do not believe will be complete as of June 30th. If there are any items, and I believe there may be one or two, then we, you may see some additional reconciliation items at second readings. I just want to make you aware of that. As soon as we get that list put together, I'll send it out to you in advance of the meeting, if possible.
And that would just be to shift funding or partial funding?
From one year to the next, right. It has no overall impact on the bottom line by the end of 2010, but there may just be some variance between expenditures from one year to the next. But I just didn't want you to be surprised next week.
Barb, yes, I just wondered if the, some of the details of the BURN grants will be advertised in either the newsletter or on the website, so people understand better what they're going to comment on.
I know there's been a-
You already put it out on the advisory.
Yeah, there was a community advisory sent out by Kathy Plevee, I believe it was the 15th, which was whatever day that we-
Last, last Friday.
Last Friday, and I think that will be on the newsletter as well, and we can certainly mention it in the next few status and information reports.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Okay, then we will move on to our special session, and the first item on the agenda is the resolution adopting the strategic plan. And I would remind my colleagues that we've gone through a number of iterations on this, and I'm sure that we could keep editing it from now until we die. And the part of the language in the strategic plan is that we will revisit it every year, and so that as we need to, as we find little things that we need to fix, we can go ahead and fix those. It doesn't say we have to only do it once a year. If there were some items that people felt particularly strongly about, we could always come back and revisit them, but I think it's time to just get it out there and say, we've worked on it, and we've worked on it, and here it is, and let's go forward. So Suzanne, did you want to make any comments, or?
Well, I just wanted to mention that the, that there was some reworking in terms of format of strategic plan, that information's posted on the website. Councilmember Snipper had some kind of edit text comments, some typo or minor corrective comments that we will go ahead and make unless somebody has an issue with those, but I haven't received any other written comments.
Okay. Would somebody like to move the res-
I'll move it. Thanks.
Okay. Yes?
I just wanted to thank the people who had written in and made comments on the strategic plan. Very appreciated.
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to say that those have seriously taken into consideration in this, in this special document.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we didn't incorporate everything that they raised, but I think they raised good comments, and I think, as Bruce noted, this is a living document, which we wisely look at every year, and I'm looking forward to digesting those comments that were written in even further, and when we look at it again in due time, adjusting as necessary.
Or council comments? Councilmember Simmons and Councilmember Clay?
Thank you. I really think it was a good process that we used to come up with this draft, or this strategic plan. I think it's a good step forward in improving our overall budget process and management of the city, so I'm very supportive of this document. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
I want to make a suggestion for a change and a caveat. They're both related to grammar. So the suggestion of the change I'm going to make is in the three sort of themed goals at the top, that they do not have parallel construction. The reason why I would bother to take that up right now rather than wait for a year is because it's the first thing that people say, that people see when they read it. And so if we don't want to go back to sustainability, livability, and accountability, I would suggest we go in the other direction and make the language at least parallel to the engage, responsive, and service-oriented government and livable community by changing sustainability to sustainability, sustainable city, or sustainable community. And I could live with that. So I don't care which way, but I would like at least to have some kind of parallel construction of those themes. And the second is that, just to note, that we're not voting on the grammar and style and usage at this point, and if at some time, someone somewhere in the city besides me finds a copy of an MLA style guide or an AP style guide and applies it to this document, that they won't be precluded to doing, from doing so by the vote tonight.
And I'll just say that I would have no problem changing sustainability to sustainable community to get that parallel construction. I think that's a reasonable thing to do, and it's not hard to do at this point. Is there any sense of sticking with sustainability? If not, we'll go forward with that change. Are there any other comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution adopting the strategic plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on our agenda is a first reading ordinance adapting the FY10 tax rate, and that would be setting the tax rate at 58 and a half cents. The city manager's proposed rate is 60 and a half cents, and the constant yield rate is 55.1 cent. Would somebody like to move that ordinance?
Mayor?
Yeah?
I just wanted to make clear, it's not 58 and a half cents, it's 58 cents.
Oh, did I say 58 and a half?
Yeah.
Sorry, 58.
Okay.
I wondered about that as I, after I got past it, I thought, did I say 58 and a half?
Move it with that clarification.
Second?
Moved by councilmember Barry, seconded by councilmember Clay. Other council comments? Councilmember Wright?
I'll leave my longer comments for the budget, but it's connected. I'm going to vote no on this item, and the main reason is I feel like we could have gone further in limiting the increase in taxes in this tough economic time. And the way I advocated doing that was mainly through dipping a little bit more into the reserve, the healthy reserve that we've built up, which will probably grow as a result of what's been historical lapse or budget variance. So that's, I just wanted to explain why I was going to vote no on this.
Comments? Councilmember Simmons? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. I also came here tonight prepared to say no, and my reason was quite similar to Councilmember Wright's, in that not only do I think that we could have done better at reducing our expenses and the tax rate, but I think that we should have done better in this difficult economic times. I would have liked to consider more the suggestions Mr. Wright made, but I would also have liked to seen us reduce our expenses more.
I'll just say that I think we started to take a harder look at our reserves, and I can see a continuing discussion about how we want to look at reserves, how we want to treat reserves as part of an extended budget discussion in, as we move through adopting this budget, and then think about where we might want to go next year, and I can see some, some council sessions discussing that. I understand and am sympathetic to concerns about how we deal with our reserves. I think we're properly using some of them now. We anticipate using them for a portion of the public works facility as a, as a one-time expenditure. I think that's a good way to go. I think as we get the change in assessments that will come over the next year, we'll have a better sense of where we are and where we need to be going forward, and I think that will be a valuable discussion to have, but at this point in time, I'm comfortable with where I believe the council's going to go with the items tonight. Any other council comments? Any public comment on the first reading ordinance adopting the FY10 tax rate?
Yeah, my name's Pat Lovelace again. Those are still Pat Lovelace. I'd like to make, I'd like to mention that in these tough economic times, I'd like to ask the city council to remember that a dollar bill can only be spent once, and it comes out of the pockets of the poor as well as the rich. You know, it comes out of some people who are on low income, and a lot of people are on the very edge of landing on the streets, you know, and we know because we appreciate what Terry does. He brings food over to us on an emergency basis, brings a manor package over to us, and that shows that, you know, we should really look at where we are spending our money, you know. Do we really need it? Does the public really need it in this economic time? That question should be asked. Every time we look at something, you know, like we look at some grandiose idea or something like that, we should always say, does the city really need this now? You know, we got people who are going out of their jobs, people who are, people who are being foreclosed upon all over the country. Are we setting a good example by, by stating, we need this now, we need this now? But instead, it's a lot of things we do not need now, so we should really look at our budget and really look at how we spend it before we do it, because that's, that's not your money you're spending, that's the city's money that's being spent, and we should always look at that. You know, do we really need to be spending this money right now? Because once that dollar is spent, it is gone. You know, you can't get it back. As well as a lot of people out there looking for jobs, they may not be able to get them back, as well as their healthcare and their insurance, as well as their college funds and stuff for their kids. So we should really start looking at this and set an example for our country. Some of these things, we may not need it right now. We may be able to wait on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? This is the first reading ordinance, so all those in favor of the ordinance adopting FY10 tax rate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I believe that vote was four to two, so that passes. Before we take up the next item, we need to vote to convene as the stormwater management board. Did somebody like to move that?
Move.
Second?
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Clay. We are now in session as the Tacoma Park Stormwater Management Board. Our next item is first reading ordinance adopting the FY10 stormwater budget. And this keeps the rate, I believe, the same as it has been, as the current year, which is, where is it?
It's 48 dollars.
Forty-eight dollars per, per unit, which is the base unit, which is the basic single-family charge, and everything else is based on that. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Wright?
I just want to say clearly, I'm going to vote for this. I know it's a little confusing, the different pieces of the budget, but this is something separate from the other, the tax rate we just voted on and the full budget. I'm fully in support of the rate proposed and how the funds will be used to continue to improve our stormwater management in the city.
Any other comments? Any public comments on the first reading ordinance adopting the FY10 stormwater budget? Seeing none, this is first reading ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did we move the ordinance, or did we just move to convene as the stormwater management board?
Hmm. All right, who, I-
I don't think we moved it.
We didn't move the-
I can believe that. Who'd like to move the ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Now, are there any comments on ordinance on the table? Okay. All those in favor of the first reading ordinance adopting FY10 stormwater budget, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. The next item is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY10 budget, including the FY10 to 14 capital improvement budget. Would somebody like to move that ordinance?
I'll move it.
Bruce?
Yes?
Do we have to unconvene as the stormwater management-
No, no. No, we can continue to sit as the stormwater management board.
Two hats.
Yep.
Second?
I believe that was moved by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Are there any comments on the FY10 budget and the capital budget? Councilmember Wright?
I'm voting against this, because I think as part of this is the decision about how we finance the public works department, and I advocate that, because bond financing is around 3%, I think that most residents would want us to take advantage of that very low cost of money and finance the full public works renovation with bonds, so that's why I'm voting against it. I'm not opposed to the public works renovation project, it's just how we're going about paying for it.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm going to bring up something briefly that came up at the, at this conference today, and that was using, trying to persuade the federal government to use some of their stimulus funding to help buy down mortgage rate, interest rates on mortgages, particularly refinances, financing on single-family homes, and building in a commitment on the part of the person doing the refinancing to upgrade the, the energy efficiency of the home. And that's, and in that, in doing that, in taking out a chunk of money to upgrade the efficiency of the home, you employ and empower people in the community and get a big chunk of that money back as, as tax revenue. I thought I found it a creative idea, and I'd like to see us think about those kinds of creative ideas that, that recycle money in the future. I'm certainly not averse to using, to bonding to create that kind of an opportunity, but I'm, I'm glad that we're using at least some money as a kind of cash down on the public works facility because we have it and we may not at a later date.
Councilmember Clay.
It's a little off-topic from the budget, but as it, as it relates to, you brought it up in how it relates, but my response is a little off-topic, and that's that there-
It's true.
There exists a, there exists such a mechanism to have that kind of mortgage, an energy efficiency mortgage, and you have to have your home certified, and in considering the 30% of income for a payment, they give you credit for the amount of energy savings that are realized when calculating the affordability of the home and how much home you can buy. My understanding was that it wasn't highly utilized as it was available, so I think the trick would be not to come up with a product because it exists, but to get people to understand how to use it effectively.
And this, by buying down, if I can flesh it out a little bit, by buying down the interest rate, you also reduce the, the monthly payment, and that is the incentive for, for using this kind of mechanism, in hopes that it would be more, more, there would be put into play, and people would take advantage of it because they would save money.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to compliment Mayor Williams for the budget process this year. I think it was the best budget process that I've been involved with since I've been on the city council, and I really appreciate the time and attention that Mayor Williams put into addressing the various concerns that council members had, not only in the budget itself, but also in the process. And I think that with the steps, some of the changes that have been made in the process this year, and the implementation of the strategic plan, I'm hopeful that our budget process will continue to improve in the coming years, and I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm, as I said earlier, somewhat conflicted by the budget this year because I feel that we could have and should have done better at keeping our tax rate down, and for that reason, I am going to vote against the budget. And just so people don't get confused, as Councilmember Wright said, there are some steps along here in some of the other resolutions we're passing tonight, ordinances that we're passing tonight, that I will support, although they do affect the tax rate, and I've been less enthusiastic about them than some of the other council members, but at the same time, I think that voting against the budget makes my point about the tax rate, and I don't have to vote against everything just because I don't agree with it. Thank you.
I thought voting against the tax rate made the point about the tax rate. Councilmember Wright?
I'm sorry, I was a little confused. I thought we were just voting on the CIP. I should pay closer attention because I did have some additional comments related to the budget. So again, I'm voting against the budget, and there's really three reasons overall. The first is I don't think we go far enough in the greening of Tacoma Park. I think that it is commendable that we voted to go to 100% wind power, and I'm supportive of that, but we chose not to hire a green coordinator, which I think would have cost about $60,000 to $65,000 a year. And I, and I'm going to quote from Martin Luther King here. So during his "I had a dream" speech, he just made these two, had these two sentences in there, and I'm not equating the fight against segregation and racial injustice with the fight against global warming, but I think they are comparable in the sense that this is one of the most important and biggest fights of our time as a society. And so he said, "We have all come to this hollow spot to remind America of the fierce urgency of now. This is not the time to engage in the luxury of cooling off or to take the tranquilizing drug of gradualism." So he was talking about segregation. I think that applies to global warming, and it's sort of ironic that he has the phrase in there, "the luxury of cooling off," because we are actually heating up our planet rapidly. And I think it's a small amount of money to have paid to do that, to take advantage of and try and make the city government more energy efficient and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, as well as make the city, and we could have used that person, that person could have helped educate people about the exact type of program that Councilmember Robinson was talking about. The second reason is the financing of the public works department that I mentioned before. I feel like we are missing an opportunity there to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And then I know council members disagree with me on that, but I feel strongly about that. And then lastly, again, is that I think we could have done a greater reduction in the tax rate, mainly financed in a one-time sense through some of the reserve and with the acknowledgement that this is a tough economic time, and I think people would appreciate that reduction, or not so much of an increase in their taxes, or a lesser increase in their taxes during this time. So those are the three reasons I'm voting against it. I do want to commend Mayor Williams. I think that he, given how we set the process up from the beginning and the timing we had, he did a great job of allowing people to share their opinions and bring things to a vote, and also reach compromise and realize that, given how much time we had, we, there were some things that we needed to push forward and talk about in the next year, and I appreciate and thank the mayor for already acknowledging that we need to get those things on the agenda. And then second, I want to thank the city manager. My vote is not a reflection of her preparation of the budget and all the hard work that the city staff put in. I know you all spent many late nights with our variety of requests coming from all different points in the dais, at different points in the process, and I thank you for getting back to us with all the detailed information that allowed us to finally come to a decision. So, thanks.
And I'll just say about the, kind of the process that we've been through and where I think we're going to go as we move forward, thinking about future budgets, that I think there was a sentiment before we started on this budget process that the council needed to talk about things before we started into the budget. I think there, it was hard for us as council members to come up with some of the specifics about what it was that we felt we needed to talk about, and I think that this budget process has made it a lot clearer to each of us, the areas that we might want to have those discussions about before the preparation of the next budget, and I think there's a much clearer sense of what would be involved and how we might want to go about that, and I think that that will improve that future budget process. I'm, however, happy with where we've gotten to on this one, and just one brief comment on the environmental position. I think that there's been a sense that, I've heard from the city manager and deputy city, deputy city manager, that a lot of what might have been accomplished with a, with a new position can be accomplished with the positions that we have, and that there's a lot we can do, and I think that this council has moved in that direction already in incorporating the lead standards and certification in the process for the auditorium project, and in understanding how that might fit into the public works renovation, and some options that have been mentioned as far as how we might go about doing that, and some opportunities for, potentially for some firms who might be hired to help us with that, that they might be willing to kind of give us some freebies in terms of their ability to understand and work with and go through the certifications for energy efficiency. And I think we've, we've got ordinance coming up in the next few weeks, awarding a bid for the green roof, and we anticipate having some options on the auditorium project for the potential for some solar panels on the roof of this room. I think the council is moving in a much greener direction as some opportunities open up to us, and I look forward to continued discussions along those lines and continued opportunities that can present themselves, and I anticipate that we will be a much greener city a year from now. now, and that the process that we will have to go through to get there and the staff who will help us do that will be up to the task. Any other comments from the council on this first reading ordinance adopting FY '10 budget, including the capital budget? Is there any public comment on the ordinance adopting the budget and the capital budget? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I believe that was four to two, so that passes at first reading. The next item is the second reading ordinance adopting a revised FY 2009 pay scale for staff who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. We had first reading of this, and we have, I think, a little additional information that is part of the packet that made it maybe a little clearer on what this is. Does the city manager or the deputy city manager want to just say anything about that? Because I think we, I think the last page is additional so that it's possible to compare the old and the new.
Yes, we did include the information from the current pay scale as the, in the last page of this item, and the police pay scale as well. It's just a little bit difficult to compare in that the -- make sure it's got -- let's see. Actually, oh, I'm sorry. It comes on the next item. The numbers are a little bit different in terms of the grade level, so some of the stuff's not exactly comparable, but you can get a sense of where the different steps are and how that's changed over time. As was included in the compensation and classification study, the brackets for a number of the positions moved quite a bit, either up or down, but in studying them, the things that were similar were put into similar grades, and that's reflected here.
And so this would increase the
For the, for those persons, for staff not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, we did include some information in the cover sheet. It comprises 37 positions. Fifteen of those positions would get a raise. Those would be people who are lower than the midpoint, and would be moved up to the next of the steps. The combined increase of those raises is $28,526.
And this was as a result of a study looking at reclassifying, potentially reclassifying some jobs and then adjusting the pay for them based on the comparable market?
That's right. In each case, we all filled out forms identifying the kinds of tasks and responsibilities that we have, and those were things that helped classify us vis-à-vis the other staff and against other positions in the general marketplace for that.
And remind us again how long ago it was that the last time this was done?
Ninety-nine.
So it's been 10 years?
Yes.
And I would just comment that I'm supportive of this, as I was at first reading. I think that this kind of catches us up to where we need to be going forward for making sure that everybody is where they need to be, and that it fixes that 10 years' worth of potential difference, so that everybody is kind of starting from the right place going forward. I can, and then I, with having done this, I feel confident that whatever we do with the pay scale potential increases next year, that we will be treating all of our employees fairly and equally because they will all be starting from the correct point, rather than if we're not doing this now, I would feel less comfortable at any time in the future making some kind of a judgment about what might happen with pay scales in general in the city and market adjustments, because I would know that there were some disparities in the system. So I think this fixes those disparities.
And just another comment, the ASME bargaining unit has also agreed to move forward with these pay scales, and that will be brought forward to you beginning next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
I just have a question. So I'm trying to understand the numbers here. And so there's no pages on the blue thing, but I guess the second page of the ordinance portion with the, yeah. So what's on this page, the one you're looking at? That's what is proposed as new, is that right?
Yes. Basically, this is a new pay scale, both is an annual pay and an hourly pay rate. It's the same information. It's just categorized either on an annual salary or an hourly number. One of the things that is, that differentiates it from our current scale is that there's only three steps until you get to the market midpoint. On our current scale, it was four steps before you got to the market midpoint. One of the things that Jill Pyle Lintosleyen had suggested is that we were taking a very long time to get to the market midpoint, and that those step increases were quite small, and so that's been adjusted in this new schedule.
So the thing that's, I know it's hard to compare apples to apples, but you take step one, grade 21.
Right.
We're saying that it'll be actually $495 lower than it is now, is that right?
That's right. Yeah, one of the things, I mean, part of this is just the nature of looking at the whole grid. One of the things, the general comment that was made was that some of the lower-level positions were kind of above market, and some of the higher-level positions were below market, so there's been some adjustment there. It's not completely true across the board, but that's, that is reflected in this change to the pay scale.
But someone who's at, someone's not going to be reduced, right?
No, no one, no one is, no one goes down.
And then also the grade, there's fewer grades, is that correct? Because this goes up to 42, and what's, or no, there's more grades?
There's more grades.
The top ends far.
If you, once you look at the pay, once you look at the police scale, you'll see the reverse situation, but yes, that's
So in looking at the 42, 21 grades in the new scale, and there's only, what, 14 in the old one, so it's a, while it reduces the number of steps, it adds significantly to the number of grades, so that people, would it be fair to say that if we were trying to compare apples to apples, it would be hard to do, say, picking a grade level like, say, 28 and going
You'd need to look at a title, a particular title, where it was in the old system versus where it's in the new system.
That the old description that was in grade 28 would still be in 28 in the new system.
Right. And one of the things, yes, you couldn't necessarily say that. You'd have to look at the title. One of the things, let me bring forward to you the pay scale for those covered with ASME, is that there's a general category and a labor and trades category. And one of the activities during this process was to actually separate the labor and trades pay scale out of the general administration pay scale, which did make a difference in how all of these things were able to be categorized. It makes it, the apples-to-apples comparison easier by title.
And will you remind me how many employees are covered by this, the non-collective bargaining agreement, please?
Not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. There's 37 positions. Fifteen positions would get a raise, 22 positions would not get a raise.
And most of those positions that would get a raise would be on the higher end?
It varies, and in fact, the person that's making the largest amount is relatively low down. It really varies by title. So it's, it's, part of this, it's very difficult to kind of, until you're looking at each particular person, you know, there's a whole difference between comparing brackets and then individual people in their positions and where they are in that, in that bracket. So it's a, it's a lot of detail. What we're trying to do is make sure that the brackets are comparable compared to the larger marketplace.
Councilor McCray?
Okay, I thought I knew what was going on, and then after listening to Taka, more confused again. So let me ask this question. Who decided which employees who would maybe have had, maybe if you were in category 27 before, you might have a couple of different choices of categories that they went into this time. Who decided which employees went into which new categories? Was that done by the
That was the consultant.
Consultant based on their tasks?
Right, and that went back and forth over numerous months because the employee filled out a questionnaire, the supervisor made comments on that, both bits of information were given to the consultant. There was back and forth, so there was quite a lot of interactivity, looking at them, the positions compared to other positions in the, in the overall city government, and then, again, standards for the region, for the market.
Any other questions, comments? Is there any public comment on this second reading ordinance implementing a revised pay scale in the current year? This is a second reading ordinance, and so this will require a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Okay, that goes five to one. The next item is the second reading ordinance adopting a revised FY 2009 pay scale for police officers. That is very similar to the one that we just passed, but for police instead of those not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. Suzanne, you said that there was something here that made it maybe a little clearer on this one?
What about clearer? But this, but this is somewhat a different perspective from the previous one, in that in this case, the lower-level positions were quite undermarket, and so the lower brackets have been raised more significantly, and the brackets for the higher-level positions have not gone up for the same amount. The, and also, I just wanted to explain, there's, for some reason, we've had a very strange way of categorizing how you go from the first grade, which is cadet while you're in, in the training. The next step up, according to the local 400 agreement, is called grade two. So even though it's equivalent to grade three on the chart, we've made it, we've called it grade two on the new scale so that it's consistent with the text in the agreement. It's actually an 18-month period. It's a different kind of a unit, but I just, if people are looking down and seeing the old scale going from 1, 3, 4, and the new in 1, 2, 4, the numbers are comparable, but they just have the different identifications.
Okay. Any questions on this one?
And then just back to what was on the cover page, the police officers represented under this scale comprise 31 positions, and 80.6 percent of them would get a raise under this one. The total amount of that increase is $32,775.
Assuming an effective date of May 24?
Yes.
I'm just kind of curious why we're missing a number, why we decide to
Well, it's because a cadet's while you're in the training program, and then you have a, you don't actually have a first year, you have a first 18 months as a private. So it's a, it's just a special way that that's covered. It's not a standard annual step for the, for the second grade. And so that's been the agreement done with the
No, no, I get that. I'm just wondering why we decided to go from having a set of grades, there's actually six grades with the second grade missing versus the set of six
It's trying to match up with the contract language.
Or just trying to make up with the contract language. It's, we just didn't change the other numbers, just because everybody kind of knows that there are seven or whatever. We just left that.
Seven with a hole. Any ordinance? Ready, yeah.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, second by Councilmember Wright. Any other comments, Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, did I just hear that the $32,000 is the additional money that would be paid this fiscal year?
No, it's, it basically represents the, the amount, if you take the difference between an annual salary under the old system and the new system. It's a little bit less because of the fiscal year. You don't also know when somebody's anniversary date is or whatever, so this is, in some respects, it's a bit of an average.
Okay, so the $32,000 is an annualized increase from one, from one to the next?
Yes.
Okay, that's what
Okay, okay. So you're, so the correct answer to my question was no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what caused the confusion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Okay, then this is second reading ordinance, requires a roll call vote. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously, and that takes us to the next agenda item, which is the second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Elections Code. Does anybody
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Say anything about that one? I don't think so, because I don't see either the clerk or the chair of the election board. We had some discussion of the details of this in work session and at the first reading ordinance, whenever it was, last week, two weeks ago?
Yes, last week, I think. Is the blue additional language, or is that still a carryover, the language that we voted on last week, or last time, whenever that was?
I don't think there are any changes since
Right.
No, it's the same as last, first reading.
Okay. Any council comments on this? Are there any public comments on the second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Elections Code? Seeing none, will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stevens? Councilwoman Snipper?
Aye.
Okay, that carries five, nothing unanimously. We'll now move to work session, and we have the final agenda item for tonight, which is the quarterly financial report.
This is probably somewhat of an unusual quarterly financial report, because given the focus that the council has had on the budget for the past month or so, this is kind of a rehash of things that you have heard in terms of talking about revenues and projections as part of the budget process, as well as the analysis we had given the council about budget variances from year to year. So I guess, having said that, in the interest of time, I guess I'd kind of defer to the council if you have any questions, rather than my kind of walking through the highlights. There's quite a bit of information here.
Yeah, I kind of feel like we've trampled through this garden a couple times.
I think you have. If you'd like to step through again, that's perfectly fine.
Through this community garden.
But like I say, it's, pretty much, things are on, pretty much where they're at. Nothing has really changed from the discussion we had at the very start of the budget process in terms of where Yvonne and I thought we would end up this fiscal year in terms of revenues and expenditures.
Questions or comments? I guess I filled that water cup up for no reason. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.[1724.47]